Our final item for discussion tonight is item number 13, the Superior Plating Site. And Ms. Barrar, it's staff.
Commissioners, I know we're getting close to the end of the meeting, but staff has inquired about the situation with the temperature in the room. So we'll see if anything happens with that.
Good evening, Commissioners. The applicant has requested that we discuss three of the conditions on site plan review this evening. So I'm going to go very briefly over the proposal and then highlight those specific conditions of approval that they would like to discuss this evening. The property location is 315 First Avenue Northeast and then 125, 119, 115, and 101, Fifth Street Northeast. So it is the parcels that are outlined in black on your screen, obviously not in total for these, all of these parcels that are located to the west or to the east of the site, but it does include a portion of these properties as part of the main development site, which is again 315 First Avenue Northeast. The subject property is located at the intersection of University and First. Fourth Street Northeast at one point extended into the property. That was vacated, but they are proposing to use that as one of the principal means of ingress onto the property. The applications that are before you for Superior Plating Site redevelopment include a conditional use permit for planned unit development. The property is Zone C2. The development, of course, is a mixed-use development. A variance above and beyond the two bonuses they get in the C2 district and the FAR allowance in the planned unit development from 2.7 to 2.91. Site plan review, preliminary and final plats to consolidate some underlying lots on the subject property. And then lastly, a vacation application for part of a utility vacation or utility easement, excuse me, that exists on the property. Again, the property is Zone C2. It's about a three-acre site. It's located within the boundaries of the East Hennepin Activity Center. It's also adjacent to University Avenue Southeast and Fourth Street Southeast, both of which, of course, are community corridors. And then East Hennepin Avenue, of course, is a designated commercial corridor, and that's located approximately one block from the site. So just very generally, and then we'll roll into the recommendations and the conditions of approval that the applicant wanted to discuss. I know this is a bit busy, but this is in your packets. And the only reason that I put this image up is to show this area highlighted in red. And what this, this is something that I discussed in the alternative compliance of site plan review. And basically what this is, is it's a 10-foot existing utility and drainage easement. So this is an area in which the applicant cannot actually construct a permanent structure. And so as you can see, the building itself respects that easement. But one of the things that we had talked about at the Committee of the Whole Meeting, which was in April, and subsequently, the EAW for this project was approved by the city at about that same time. But at that Committee of the Whole Meeting, one of the things that we talked about was the interface of the buildings on this site with the public street. So I'll get to that more specifically now. But basically, and there's a little bit of scribbles here, so I hope you can see this clearly, but I'm going to start from the corner at the University and First Avenue Northeast intersection. Basically, what I want to show you, just moving northward on University Avenue, you'll remember that there is a grade change in this location. It elevates up into the bridge. There's the BNSF freight and rail corridor that runs along the north side of the property. Again, this is the vacated extension of Fourth Street Northeast, and then this is the Two Street intersection. But moving northward along University Avenue Northeast, what I'd like to do is just show you the building placement components of the site plan. And this sort of tailors into the conditions of approval that I had put on the project that they would like to discuss. But basically, when you're at the intersection of University and First, the building, if you extend the building down, it's about 27 feet in that location for a separation between the property line that runs along University and that face of the building. As you move northward to the site, what you'll see is that there is a transformer. And I wanted to point out this location because it's one of the things that I note in the conditions of approval. There's a transformer that's located adjacent to a service drive. This is a one-way service drive that will be utilized for access for semis that are coming to the site to load and unload, so for loading purposes. And that will be done internally to the site, but it is a direct shot off of University, one thing that we've been concerned about. This is, adjacent to that service drive is the principal entrance to a six-story building, which is L-shaped, that's located at the intersection of the specific site. And then again, moving northward, you've got basically porches and walk-up units that vary anywhere from zero to four feet from the property line. And then the actual mass of the building wall is about 13 feet for the majority of the stretch along University. There's a segment of the building on the far north side of the site in which there's this open delineated green space. It's actually a recessed area about 80 feet to the parking garage, which is located centrally on the site. I know I'm talking quickly and running through a bunch of stuff, but I think you remember just the bare basics from, so I'll just, I'll keep rattling through this quickly, and then please stop me if you have questions. Running back to First Avenue Northeast and then moving eastward, the building placement in this location is 10 feet, 7 inches from the property line. As I mentioned earlier, there's that 10-foot drainage and utility easement that runs along that length. So basically, the building location in this area where a building could actually be set is 7 inches from the edge of that utility easement. But this is certainly just like the University site, it does require alternative compliance. As you move eastward, and I'll point out this area in a second, basically what this is, is an outdoor public plaza. So there's conditions of approval that are also tied to this, and I do an analysis in the planned unit development section of the staff report, as well as in the site plan review component of the staff report. But this is basically ground floor commercial in this building. Again, walk-up units in here, but it transitions from a five-to-six-story building. So this is one of the three buildings that are located on site. Again, commercial spaces that line. But basically, as you start moving up, there is a 14-foot wide arcade that leads to the parking that's provided on site. It's accessed off that First Avenue Northeast frontage. Again, moving easterly, this is a standalone two-story building that will be a restaurant component of this development. And then the tower piece of the site, I meant to bring up my pen, but I didn't, but the tower piece of the site is actually located in this particular area. So it's more centrally located. It's not up and interfacing with the public street. It's set back behind, and the interface with the public street are these two buildings. So again, the L-shaped building with the ground floor commercial, the walk-up units that exist on University Avenue, and then this restaurant space that's proposed in this location. In terms of the proximity of that tower to the property line along First Avenue Northeast, it's a spread of about 128 feet, and there's only 32 feet of that tower base that's actually exposed. But as you look just basically in totality for the buildings that are meant to front along First Avenue Northeast, again, it varies from 10 feet, 7 inches to 38 feet for that two-story component. The space between the tower component and First Avenue Northeast is outdoor dining space for the restaurant. And you probably saw in some of the images that they're proposing to put sort of this artsy metal trellis sort of canopy system in here. So it creates a nice little interface between that specific building and the public street. As previously mentioned, you know, you've got the service drive that basically, again, is for access and loading for the specific site. And then what they're basically proposing to do is to utilize the old extension of Fourth Street Northeast, which again was vacated previously. So this would be the primary access to not only the retail parking and the commercial parking that's proposed on site, but also to all of the other parking for the residential units that are proposed. What I neglected to mention in the beginning is that they're basically proposing 280 dwelling units, about 385 parking spaces. The site is very well served by transit. As I mentioned in the staff report, they're, it's serviced by at least 10 different bus routes that operate, you know, on a very consistent basis and those that operate a little less consistently. But this is the blow-up of the image, and what I wanted to do is just show the area that we consider to be part of the public plaza, so that you have that for consideration when you're looking at the building placement provision for alternative compliance. And it's the area that's shaded and basically extends to the, nearly the midpoint of the ground floor of the commercial space for the L-shaped building. So this entire area here is designed to be a public plaza. There's seating included, there's public art included, there are interpretive elements that were required because the original building on this site was the former East Side Station. So we wanted to have an interpretive element when that building was removed because of the contamination on the site, just basically lending to the history. So there are a bunch of different elements. They do exceed all of our plaza standards, but you'll note that in the conditions of approval, one of the things that I do talk about is how we want more, because they're asking to pull that building so far back from the public street. And I'm just going to bring up this exhibit now, again, because I'm going to rattle through the conditions of approval, but what this is meant to show is that they have designed the access off of University Avenue Northeast to accommodate. So basically, this would be where the actual service door itself would be. And so with this door closed, a full semi could still load without blocking pedestrian access along the public sidewalk. However, even though Public Works and MINDOT have said that they're willing to support this, this is something that we flagged, or it's something that I flagged originally in the environmental review process, just saying that this, given the high volume of PED and bike volumes in this area, I was just concerned about them incorporating that, the fact that this was such a big site. It seemed like there were other alternatives for access, and perhaps that could be accommodated on that Fourth Street extension. They've got a lot of right-of-way to work with there, but they do feel that that's a key element of their design. Again, MINDOT and Public Works have both said they will approve it, but I, I wanted to make sure that you knew that we were a little bit reticent about that design incorporation into this building. It just seems like it sort of breaks up what could be a really nice continuous PED corridor along that side of the building. And then the aforementioned transformer that I'm going to, that I've requested the conditions of approval be removed is located here as well. I think I might stop there in terms of exhibits and then just go into the conditions of approval. I'm happy to go into more detail on these items, but we are recommending approval of all the applications tonight. On the planned use development, application for the conditional use permit, you know, we kind of have that first standard condition of approval. The second one's guaranteeing the amenities that they're proposing as an offset, you know, through the PED, basically what they're asking to be relaxed is having more than one principal residential structure on the site, removing the required loading spaces so they can do that centrally in a non-designated loading space that doesn't meet our maneuvering requirements, et cetera. FAR, and then height, obviously, for the 21-story component of the site, which is the condo or the apartment building, potentially condo, never know. And then lastly, the third condition of approval is just basically us saying that on that extension of Fourth Street Northeast, that there be guaranteed an access easement so that even if the developer that currently has possession of this entire site sells that we're not dealing with additional curb cuts along First, and that they will be able to utilize that very large right-of-way for access to their site. The second application, of course, is the FAR allowance. We are recommending approval of that. We think it's reasonable and consistent with adopted policies for this specific area. Site plan review is where the conditions of approval come into play that they'd like to contest, so I'll just wrap up with that. But preliminary and final plat, and then the vacation, we also are recommending approval on, but the vacation is just a modified request from what they were originally asking. So the conditions of approval that they would like to discuss specifically tonight are six, 10, and 13. So just to kind of give you, the conditions of approval that they're not contesting, I'll just sort of brush over those quickly, but some of the additional enhancements that we're requesting for the building placement provision, the components that they need alternative compliance for are building placement and location of principal entries. Some of the things that we believe are an offset is incorporating some decorative string lights in the public plaza, as well as an additional public art piece. It's sort of à la Laramore Square in Denver, trying to get some cool decorative lighting within that outdoor plaza area. That's number three. Four, just asking for basic cross-sections so we understand a little bit more of the interplay with the grade change along University and the walk-up units, making sure we don't have portions of the garage that are visible, that it's all covered with landscaping, including additional plantings on that north end of the site, where you've got that big recess to the parking garage adjacent to the railroad trench and just kind of greening that up a bit more. It's all indicated now as currently being sod. Locating the principal entrance, and so this is where we'll talk about one piece that they'd like to talk about. And I had touched on it originally, but this is the entrance piece for the lobby to the L-shaped building. So the above floors, other than the first floor, are all residential. And then you've got the walk-up units, but it's a five-to-six-story structure. This is the lobby in this location, and so what we'd like to see them do is pull that closer to the street. So we're recommending that that be relocated to be within eight feet of the property line in that location to emphasize its importance along that street beside. Seven is just some architectural elements that we wanted to add to the tower because it is facing inward. The actual access point to the tower itself is in this location, and we think that's a benefit, but it could also be a con. And so, and just making sure that it's prominent and we don't have signage requests in the future because it is inward-looking, we're just going to ask them to make that a little bit more prominent so that it's intuitive for people to be able to get to the front of the building. And then just a provision about walkway, making sure that it's continuous grade and paving pattern from that tower principal entrance, again, because it's about 150 feet to the public sidewalk, ensuring that within this area with the walkway to the parking, that it has adequate windows in that location. You've got the commercial tenants wrapping, but making sure that there's natural surveillance and it's not a scary place to be. 10, again, is another question, another condition of approval that they wanted to talk about. Again, it's related to this specific mechanical unit there. They will have the reasons for why it needs to be located there, but it seems a shame to locate it in front of the building in this specific location. So what we've done is requested that it be relocated further north to where you've got ample area in that, about approximately 80-foot space between the building wall, the parking garage, and the public sidewalk. 11 is public plaza. Conditions of approval was just include the additional provisions I noted before, as well as the ones that they're currently proposing. I did request that they work on the overall width of the curb cut off of Fourth. Right now, it's shown at 37 feet. It seems a little wide. And so I've asked them to look into working with Public Works to look at further reducing the width of it in that specific location. I've talked about the next condition, which I've asked them to consider eliminating. I haven't required it. Again, Public Works and MINDOT have both approved that, so it's a CPED staff concern. So considering eliminating the one-way service drive off of University Avenue Northeast. And last but not least, just screening mechanical equipment on site, which is a standard condition of approval. So I know that was fast, but a lot of information, so I'm happy to answer questions or just to sit down.
Thank you. Commissioner Slack, you have a question?
Very fast and very thorough. Thank you. Quick question. Do you have a graphic that actually shows turning movements into that University Avenue driveway?
I, I'm sure that I do in the packet. This is the one that I prepare or that I pulled out just wanting to be able to show that naturally, what we require typically for a large loading vehicle, which is a 12-foot by 50-foot wide area, can be accommodated with the garage door closed and without impeding the public sidewalk. The truck-turning templates were included as part of the TDMP that was approved by Public Works.
Okay, so the width of that driveway needs to be what's being shown?
Right now, it's shown at 20 feet, and that's probably about as narrow as we'd want to get with a rig that big.
And then, real quick, the second question, as it relates to condition number six. You probably said it, because you threw out a lot of dimensions, but the principal entrance to the lobby on University, how far back is it actually now from the property line versus, you say you want it to be within eight feet? So what is it now?
Oh, I, they are telling me it's 11 foot 10 from behind me. I remember measuring that building wall to approximately 13 feet, so 11, 11 feet, 10, 12 to 13 feet back. So it would need to be moved essentially four to five feet forward.
Okay, to the, to the property?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Are there any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing for this item. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first, and if you could, focus your presentation on the conditions you have concerns with. Please state your name and address for the record.
President Brown, planning commission members, thank you. My name is Peter Schmuleski, Vice President Development for Lenora Malta Family. My office is at 400 South Fourth Street. Quick presentation, should've taken just about an hour and a half to two hours to get through, so should be home by tomorrow.
Probably.
That was a great introduction to the project. I know you were all quite familiar with it, and I think there's a lot of good things in here with respect to the 14 conditions of approval, and we'll just concentrate on the, on the ones per your request. You're obviously familiar with the site. Just to mention earlier, this is a part of five key components that we worked with, with the neighborhood group, and went through, and they were a key element of this design. And a lot of the issues that we have in reference to the things we're going to talk about tonight are good problems to have. There's a lot of things that have done with this design, like having activated street fronts almost on every edge of this building, so there's really no good place to put a transformer. You know, we've hidden all of the service drive as much as we could behind the building. So I think they're good problems, and I think they're good issues to bring up and talk through, but really, there's only three that we're going to talk about today. You can see the 14 that are up here. Most of these are either already within the plan, or we're going to change our plan to make sure that they abide by these conditions of approval. So I'll flip through these. No need to talk about them too much. This is number six, the principal entrance. The lobby adjacent to University Avenue Northeast shall be pulled out and relocated eight feet. It's currently 11 foot 10. This is certainly something that we can do, but we want to show you what is currently in this design. Right now, this is the entrance, and this is really an architectural move. It's to give the impression of a floating mass above an open-air mass. You can see that that entrance is about a story and a half, given the change in elevation, and it is all glass. So if you can imagine this at night, those solid pieces would be dark, and those glazing areas, especially that lobby, will be lit up, and it's more like a beacon that's right there. The reason for its location actually pulled back is much like the rest of the building that we pulled back to really give back to that public element, to provide ample space. And here's another view of that, for gathering, for entering, for exiting, et cetera, in that area. If you're familiar with the site, there is a lot of truck traffic that comes through here. We've dedicated this entire design really as a primary entrance and access for pedestrians, then for bikes, then for public transit, and then for vehicles last. And I think this is part of that entire entablature that we've put together here, is to pull that off the street front a little bit and give more of a buffer space, keep that safety area when you have these different trucks and things going by. I think it delineates the entrance really well in the way we've done it. Like I said, this is something that we can do. We just prefer the design that we have currently. Number 10, the mechanical unit located, and this is the transforming unit located the service drive, relocated to a less prominent location along University Avenue Northeast. That first piece of that sentence, I think, is something that we are striving to do and we continually work with. The second piece is really not possible for us to do, to put it adjacent to the parking garage in that open space. We would like it there as well. This is one of those things that, there's never a good spot for it, especially when you have good design. ESG has done a wonderful job of lining and activating just about every single facade, so whenever you put it somewhere, it's in front of something. This needs to be located near our electrical room, which is in the basement of this building, and needs to be located near where the utilities come into the building. So this really isn't something that we've said, this is the spot that we want it. This is something that the engineers have come back to us and said, this is where it needs to be. That exact location is what we found to be the best of the locations in the possible areas. This can't move very much, but part of the conditions of approval, and I think it's number 14, talks about screening all of these mechanical units. We don't want to see this as much as you don't want to see this, so we're going to put all of our efforts towards making sure that we can screen this, and we're going to work with our engineers to see if there's another location, but in all likelihood, it's not going to be able to move far from here. So as such, we would ask for that to be removed from the conditions of approval. Lastly, number 13, consider eliminating the one-way service drive off of University Avenue. In our opinion, this is really one of the most important things that we've done in successfully planning this building, is to pull off all of the service, to pull off the garbage trucks, to pull off the loading and unloading. If we have restaurants and retail there, there's going to be truck traffic that comes in and out of there. And I think one of the greatest things is that we put that out of the public eye. We looked at all the turning radiuses and everything about where they could be elsewhere in that public drive off of Fourth Avenue, which we formerly called a woo-nor, which is somewhat of a light definition that we are using. Really, we want the pedestrians, again, to take control. If you have trucks in there and turning around, someone coming into retail trying to park there, someone coming home to their apartment and trying to park there, it would be chaos, and that area would be a lot larger, and we'd have a lot more impervious spaces. So there's a lot of things here that we think is, really creates a successful area. You can see the site plan here for that service drive, a colored diagram to kind of show you those areas. And I think, again, ESG and the planners have done a great job of really hiding this area and still having a very good connection between the spaces. And you can see, when you're looking at a topographical view and how the community would move through this area, you wouldn't even know that that service drive is there, and there's a lot of public areas that are advantaged from that. So that's the end of the, my formal presentation for those three items that we're requesting to be removed, but obviously available for any, any questions.
Commissioner Louie Peir, you have a question?
Yeah, I had a question. I was just looking at the floor plan and then the basement plan showing where the electrical room was, and I'm just wondering why you don't move your electrical room to that dead corner in the edge of your parking ramp, and then you can move the transformer?
It has to do with locating it near as many units as possible and in combination with where that utility is coming into the building. So if we put it off in a dead corner, then you're taking all of those services and running them at a much greater length to all of the units, so it makes it a lot less efficient.
Okay. And then, I, I didn't see it in the packet, but do you have a turning radius diagram showing? Because I was thinking about that stretch University, and it's kind of an uphill sort of thing, and I'm trying to think if I was driving or walking or biking there, what would it be like to encounter a semi-truck? How wide does it have to swing? Is it swinging into the oncoming lanes on University?
Yeah, and that's something we're exploring, too, and I think the entrance for that will likely be edited. If you can see right now, it's a straight-on entrance. We would likely round that, which would be beneficial for the truck-turning radius, and also it would increase the plaza for the entrance to the residential area. So if you can imagine, if it's just a one-way right turn, that we can bring that radius into our site to make it easier to enter that area. Either way, wherever anyone is going to be entering this site, they're going to encumber the same thing. If we need to service this site at some point along the site, a semi-truck is going to need to enter. In our opinion, I think this is the best spot to do it. It's off this front-facing First Avenue area, and it also puts them out of the public eye as quickly as we can. And this is something we will explore even to the speeds of the garage door that will open, so we don't anticipate anyone queuing there. It's that if there, if the garage door wasn't operable, or if something's, you know, happening in that area, that you wouldn't be blocking that area. But otherwise, it should be a straight shot.
But is it pulling in or is it backing in?
It's pulling, it's pulling straight in. It's all one-way. So they would circle, they would turn right onto University Avenue and then right into the site. So that's what I'm talking about.
And then they would carry through the site and leave a different way?
Yes, and they would go straight, and then they would leave out of the vacated Fourth Street to the right.
Thank you.
So it's almost the least amount of time that you could possibly service this entire site. There is no backing up, there's no turning around. It's, it's almost a solid loop through the site.
Commissioner Slack?
I think it's interesting that these three conditions sort of contradict each other, especially on, on University. You, in my mind, have done, created this, this wonderful gesture with the building widening out, the public realm, and then sort of narrowing it the closer you get to essentially ascending over the bridge into Northeast or into the residential areas of Northeast. But in your, in your sketch right there, you don't show the, the electrical box, which I think is funny, because with that, with the gesture of pushing the building back and creating that strong promenade up there, essentially, your view is ended by the electrical box. So I personally would like to see the electrical box moved. I don't have any issues with the other two. I think that, I think that your idea for access and circulation for deliveries, I think it works well, and, and if MINDOT and our own transportation, City Transportation Group agree that, that driveway will work, I think that that's fine. The, the idea of pushing the building out, you know, I can, I can see how we'd want to see that, but again, this goes to this movement. By pushing the building out, that's really going to terminate that view, so I don't necessarily think that that's a bad thing, but I, I guess I don't have any issues with where that entrance is located. But I do think that the electrical box essentially takes away what you've done with the architecture along that street edge. So I would hope that you could find a different location for that.
Yeah, Commissioner Slack, thank you. I don't think I disagree at all. If we can find a different location for it that is better, we're going to. There are certain things in this rendering that aren't shown. Some of that is the inaccurate description of the grade change. One of the thoughts as well is that the grade of the sidewalk against the street could follow the natural grade, but then next to the retail space would stay at a flat grade, and then that transformer then would be hidden by that grade change. Just an example of what we're studying in case we can't move the location. So I would ask, as part of the conditions of approval, that we either look for a different location, or we use our best efforts in design and making sure that we make it as inconspicuous as possible in case we can't move it.
You know, I hate I'm going to say this, but I almost want you to take a look at maybe putting it on the other side of the sidewalk, so in line with the trees. Unfortunately, we deal with that at every intersection where, you know, overhead infrastructure for, for traffic components are right at the corner, and they're always right in the middle of the intersection, you know, so it usually impedes pedestrian flow. And in this case, you know, if, if it was located maybe within the boulevard area, in between the trees, maybe that, that does less harm than actually having it right at the end of the sidewalk. Again, I hate that I had to say that, but I did.
Commissioner Slack, I, I agree, and I think there's creative ways that we could incorporate into the landscaping or landscaping bed that it kind of matches the, what we've set up there as kind of our architectural system, that we could hide it in that area. And that's our intent. Like I said, we're, we don't want to see this as much as you don't want to see it. Right now, that's where engineers are telling us it has to be, so we'll push them to find alternate locations and/or try and hide it as much as possible.
All right. Are there any other questions for the applicant? All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, my name is Victor Graham, Charlotte with 132 Bank Street Southeast. I'm not going to read all of this. This is, I am president of the Nickel Island East Bank Neighborhood Association, the neighborhood association in which this area, project exists, and also chair of the fifth Superior Plating Task Group, which is the way we do things in Needna is when we have a big project, we form specific ad hoc task groups to handle it. And the first Superior Plating Task Group was, was set up in August of 2005, and so we have some very considerable experience with this site in, in all respect. The fifth, the, the task group consists of people who are not immediately around the site, like just across the tracks, on either side of the site, but also people generally in the neighborhood, including businesses, residences, and various institutions. And I think it gives a really good way of getting, you know, local contact with the site. We met three times with long lively meetings with, with, with Peter and his staff, and we had several smaller meetings where we went over individual topics. We think this design reflects both our own Needna input, our small-area plan, which has recently been, been approved regarding density, sustainability, innovative pedestrian-friendly architectural design, okay? Especially with regard to the sidewalks along First Avenue North and the Wooner, both of which we think are the best single features of this design. We see, we see the design worked out with, between us and Lennar and ESG as a model for other large projects that are sure to show up in the neighborhood, and there are two underway right now within sight of this site. So this is an important thing for us to get, that there will be additional projects of this size. At the meeting of January 21st, 2015, the, the, the task group strongly approved the project, and subsequently, the Needna Board approved the project. There are letters in file, in the files, Slack suggesting that, our approval. This is an important site, our project, and those of us that have lived for this, with this project for decades, a decade and actually was superior plating before that, are, in some ways astounded that we can have, that the site can be transformed from what it was to something of this architectural quality and that meets the requirements of the Minneapolis Comprehensive Plan for Sustainable Growth. And this has got very strong capability, capabilities on both of those. With regard to the staff report, I think we just have a couple of comments on a couple of the items. In general, we agree with the presentation that Peter made with regard to items six, 10, and especially 13. We think that it's, that we, we worked over that a lot, and we think that, think that it is, it is the, the way the traffic is handled in the site, the Wooner, the hidden traffic for the, for the, for the service ideas are, are very, are very good, and we think that we, we support his, his ideas. I think I'd just make a quick comment that, that with regard to the string lights, this, I find this very puzzling, that in a city that's so concerned with sustainability and environmental use, that we're now advocating in perpetuity that we use energy, energy, energy-using lights in place of non-powered decorative things which are already in the plan, especially with regard to condition three, that, that it doesn't make any sense to me and to us that we adopt such an unfriendly environmental stance in the, in the, now, it's not a big deal, probably, but on the other hand, it's something I just got from Minneapolis City Government today, every little bit helps. And so I think that I would just like to, to, and that, and so we think, that we think that the string light, and matter of fact, powered light, powered, I suppose, light, I mean, yeah, that was powered, from conditions three and 11 should be eliminated, just the string light feature, on the basis that they are not environmentally sound. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, Commissioner Lupe here, you have a question?
I have just a question for Aaron. Aaron, what's, what's, here is the architect, what's your opinion on the string lights? It's a, kind of the first I've heard of it has been, really been controversial, so.
I, I think they could be, I like twinkle lights. I think they're really pretty. And when they're, when they're, when they're integrated in the right way, I think that where it's yet to be seen or known who the retail tenant is, and I think that could make a difference. I could see in some of the earlier renderings that we had, where we had the trellis next to the restaurant, I think that's one very good opportunity, which may happen anyway, whether it's in the staff report or not. So I think that if they're done right and tastefully, I think it could be a really neat contribution.
So leaving them in, as a staff recommendation, isn't going to be detrimental to your proposal at this point?
Not at all.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move item A, the conditional use permit for the plan year development, item B, the variance to increase the allowable FAR, item D, the preliminary and final plat, and item E, the vacation of the portion of the utility easement.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on those items? Seeing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Slack?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Guzman?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Five zero.
And finally, we have item C, the site plan review.
Mr. President, I can, I can take a stab at item C. I recognize there may be comments or discussion about this. So I would move approval of the site plan review. How should I handle this? Should I move to amend it, or should I just verbally state my amendments, Jason?
I, I think you can, I think you can simply, if, if you wish to strike certain conditions, just state that. If you wish to add another condition, you can just.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm moving item number C, including, eliminating number six, eliminating number 13, and I would include the word shall consider in item 10. So item 10, read, the mechanical unit located adjacent to the service drive shall, that doesn't make sense.
Shall consider relocation.
The applicant shall consider relocating to a less prominent location.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on that item? Seeing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Guzman?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Five zero.
All right, and that motion carries. That concludes our business for tonight. We have committee of the whole meeting this Thursday. Our next regular meeting is July 20th. Thank you.